This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Town Council. I am calling the Special Town Council Meeting of April 5th, 2022 to order for roll call purposes. All council members are in attendance except for Ms. Wakefield.
Mr. Chairman, she sent me a message that she was gonna be probably a few minutes late tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, next item up, item three. Three A, Mr. Izzo is not in attendance, so we'll move on to three B. Matthew Wendorf is seeking reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Matthew Wendorf is a regular member and the term would run from January 1st, 2022 through December of 2024. Mr. Wendorf has been a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member since February 2021, previously was an alternate member since April 2017. His attendance has been steady over the course of his appointment. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a regular commission with five regular members and three alternate members. Currently there are three, excuse me, five active regular members, including Mr. Wendorf and one active alternate member. There are two alternate member seat vacancies.
Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you for seeking reappointment. Can you tell us a little bit about your time on the Planning and Zoning Commission and why you were seeking reappointment to it?
Yeah, so, thank you for having me tonight, guys. I've been on the Planning and Zoning Board for what seems to be quite a few years now. Started off as the alternate, as you guys know, and kind of have grown with them up to this point, learned quite a bit through the process. And I just purchased a home. I'm a new homeowner in Killingley, up on Deerwood Drive now. So I've, I've kind of really taken a hold into what the town is and what it could be. I was part of the P O C D that was just proposed recently and was part of the development of that and kind of what the vision was, at least from the 30,000-foot perspective, which I thought was really kind of eye-opening for the town and for myself as well. There was more attendance, I think, more currently in that, which was great, because normally there's very little. And I'm hoping that, I'm, I'm 33 right now and I'm hoping that I can maintain some sort of position within the town, you know, sector somehow, donating any of my time and expertise to the town. And I just feel like right now that the Planning and Zoning Commission, with the amount of time that I've spent on it, is a good fit for me to continue right now. I work in the field of architecture, so I bring a perspective from that area of expertise. And I know that we have a wide range of people that are on planning and zoning. I think it's good to have a wide variety of voices from within the town and people with different expertise. So I'm hoping that I can continue on the, on, on the board, and if you guys will have me, that is, and look forward to continuing making the town of Killingley better and a more lucrative place for people to kind of come and move and develop, so.
I will open up to questions, comments from council. Mr. Wood?
So just for a full disclosure, Matt and I have known each other for quite some time, since we went to high school together, actually.
Yes.
And Matt, Matt has been someone who's been, he's learned architecture at LS Tech and has been carrying on that trade since.
I have, yes.
You know, one thing I will say, Matt, is it's good to see folks like, younger folks like us getting involved in our town and doing things. So, you know, I want to commend you for what you're doing, and I know a few of our other classmates are doing some great things throughout our town, so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barkley?
So I've been on the P and Z as a liaison for a few meetings, and I know you need to be very knowledgeable. It's very time-consuming, but I find it very, very interesting for myself. So I'm glad that you want to continue on, because it does take a lot of time to learn all the ins and outs and...
Yeah, I agree. I, the amount that I've learned in the, in the time that I've been with planning zoning is, is quite a bit, and I'm nowhere near knowing everything, but that's kind of why we have a team of people together that, you know, between all of us, we kind of can make our way through, so it really is good.
So yeah, thank you for serving our town.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Hi, Matt.
Hello.
As the past planning and zoning, I had the pleasure of working with you for two years. And yeah, thank you for wanting to continue and with your background, you know, you're priceless with that. And the fact that you are, and I hate, I'm trying not to be age, you know, but because, because you're so young, you can contribute so much over time. So thank you for continuing.
Yes.
Thank you. Any further comments? Do you have any questions or comments for the council?
Uh, no, I think I'm all set now, guys. I mean, again, thank you for seeing me tonight, and hopefully, even if it's not in planning and zoning, maybe I'll see you in another commission at some point, so.
All right. We will be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, next item up, four citizens' statements and petitions. Ms. Calorio, how many did we receive?
We received one written comment for tonight's meeting, and it is from Joyce Horn, 28, Laurel Drive in Dayville. Her quest, she submitted a question asking about the repair and pavement of Laurel Drive up in Sedora Heights.
Yep, uh-huh. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment?
So I just wanted to check and make sure, oh, is this the wrong time, like, public comment?
Well, if you want to make public comment.
Okay, no, so I just wanted to make sure. I know we're in the middle of the budget, that we're gonna do the whole milk thing, like, down the road.
That is separate from this? The special town council meeting, the only thing on the agenda for, is, things on the agenda are the only things you make public comment on?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item five, old business and there is none. Item six, new business pavement management plan presented by Matt Dubey, Director of Highway Operations.
So if I can, I just want to kind of set the stage and introduce Matt. So Matt has been our highway director since 2019, since June-ish of 2019. And he has, you know, he came into that position from working as our engineering tech and previously had been in our highway department, boots on the ground. So he's gonna go over with you tonight, just in general, what pavement management is, and the life cycle of a road, costs associated, where are our current roads, and where do we want to go. So Matt, thanks for taking the time and for putting together the presentation.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me. Some of this may be not redundant, but some of you have probably seen some of these before from other ones, and some people, this might be new. So if it is redundant, I apologize ahead, but we'll kind of try to move through it. So this graphic right here is the general life cycle of a road. It can kind of vary, given different variables. This is one, there's a graph, a lot of graphics like this that you can see on the internet. Different people have developed different curves. This is one that I've kind of worked with and made for what seems to happen in our town. And the black thick line is pretty much the general deterioration of roads in our area, in our region. And then the shaded area is kind of like a cone uncertainty for like a storm almost. You can see where, depending on certain variables, it might hang a little higher or drop a little lower sooner. And sometimes a road can even be on the high side, and then a couple events happen in bad winters in a particular area, and it might drop off a little quicker than others. On the bottom, that's the time in years, so this is roughly a 25-year window that we're looking at. And then on the left-hand side is the Pavement Condition Index, also known as the PCI. So PCI is a number that's, it is made up by a bunch of different variables, like types of cracking, the amount of cracking, potholes, patches, rutting, roughness, delamination. And all those factors kind of play into what the PCI is. So basically PCI is like a grade of a road, or a road segment. And then different road segments have different PCIs, and then a whole road would have a weighted average, and there's your number. And the town in general would have a whole number. We'll get to that later on. So for just kind of like generic purposes, the, roughly right around here, you see have a complete line. So around 67 PCI is where the, a general average motorist would kind of realize, like, the roads are deteriorating. Like, that's where a person that's not really trained to look for it will start to notice, like, this is where the roads are, are not great. And even though it's out of a 100, pretty much 30 is about as far down as you want to push it. You don't really want to go much, much lower. You can, but it, pretty much 30 is the, the bottom.
And we've had some roads that have been below...
We have, yes. So there's some examples, where Katy Street last year, which was, it was a 33, so it was pretty much right there. But then Cape Ron a few years ago, Maryland Street, and Davis Road were all under 20. Cape Ron actually was like a 12. So, yeah. So that, we do, we have had some around, but this is the general life cycle of road. I have a slide coming up that it shows where we're at currently, but this is more so the thought process of pavement management and what proper maintenance, proper pavement management looks like. You can see here that it'll be a couple years after, and you can do a routine maintenance, and it bumps it back up. And then, then that line resets again. You can see all these lines that are dashed, dashed would be where if you stopped doing preventative maintenance on it, where, like, where it would go to. So as you can see, you hit it a couple of times, and now you're, you're pretty far ahead of where you would be if you hadn't touched it at all. And that kind of goes on. And then this puts a number with it. So these bandings are different repair categories, not techniques. And in each category, there's a few different techniques that classify as routine, preventative, minor rehabilitation, major rehabilitation, and then construct, reconstruction. So as you go on, you can see where this is what it would cost for an average routine maintenance, is a dollar 15 a square yard. And then it would do that again and again. And now, these aren't all the same treatment, but this is the average of these treatments. So maybe the first one is a fog seal, the second one's a crack seal, then you can do another crack seal. And then down here is where you get into like a chip seal, and it bumps it back up. But I kind of, looking at the graphic, I probably made the bottom numbers a little low, but right here, this one is, it says $7.10 a square yard to life, or date to life, a life to date. So that means for all these first four treatments, it costs you $7.10 a square yard, where at the same time, if you hadn't touched it at all, you'd be spending $20 a square yard later on in its life. So this is where it shows the importance of preservation and making sure you stick with the timeline, because now this whole road can come all the way out 41 years, and it never dipped below the complaint line. But yet, if you would have paved it, let it go to reconstruction, and then repaved it again, it would have been down there twice.
And you would have had to pay the $20 per square, square yard twice.
Twice.
So for the life cycle, it would have been $40 a square yard in that same 40-year life cycle as opposed to your tail end number, which is...
So, yeah, the tail end number is 2006, but actually you back up to line it up, and it would be 1776.
Right.
At the time, that would be 40. Now, this doesn't count, this doesn't account for inflation, obviously, but it's all relative. So as the years go and inflation goes, actually the treatments towards the bottom, the major rehabilitation and reconstruction actually have been getting further apart from the preservation techniques over the last 20 years.
So they've been costing more money?
More money for the bigger ones. So these numbers are gonna be even greater down the road. And, and it's hard with not knowing what inflation's gonna be on all these products over the next 41 years, but this gives you a snapshot of what it should pretty much look like. And you could back this up 40 years, and the prices would be a lot different, and they would have been a lot closer. That's why 40 years ago, preservation wasn't as prevalent, because it was, it wasn't that much more to do a reconstruction. But now that they're really starting to get separate, and the preservation techniques are starting to become really effective, this is where we're starting to get more and more separation. So, and one other thing too, we might touch on it later, but I kind of wanted to just call out there. As you can see, as the curve goes down, it kind of starts dropping, but then at a certain point, it starts to fall off a little faster. And then that's where you really start to kind of lose ground quickly. And then once it's down here, it kind of levels back out again. So this is one thing, I'm not sure exactly where we'll touch on it, but I'm thinking of it now, so we're gonna touch on it. This is one of the probably unpopular opinions for most people, especially when their road is below a 50 that they live on. Well, the problem is, once you get out of this band and you're into the reconstruction band, it's $20 a square yard regardless if you do it the first year, or you do it 10 years after it's down there. So I understand people might not like that, but in, in any terms, you're, you're kind of punting it away. So now that $20, if you choose to not spend it right here, which it's at a 39 on this graph, I have it at 39, if you take that $20 a square yard, you could do all of these other treatments on other roads for that same amount of money that year. So now you're going around in multiple roads you're keeping above. And like I said, all the way out to here, so you're doing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight potential treatments on other roads to keep them in good shape. Well, this one, that's one year. And then look, you get to the next year, and it's still above serviceable, so you can do that again. And then you can do it again, and you can do it again. You can do it for six years from this one, if we were using this one as an example, which is a 38. You could do it six years before it gets to the questionable serviceable line. And in those six years, you could treat other, eight other roads each year. So unfortunately, it's not popular for the people where it's down there, but it's, it's the fact that it's more fiscally responsible to save roads from dropping into other bands than once one gets in a low band. It's already, it's already there. So at that point, it's gonna need all the work anyway, so you're better off to wait until, and that's part of the balance of it, is you can't just let these go forever, but you can't always, you gotta make sure there's other ones that, so like, the big thing is, if there was other roads that were right on the edge of a band, then it's pretty important to grab them before they drop a band. But if there's a road like right here in the middle, okay, maybe this one, we can, we can try to let that go another year, because it's not gonna, the treatment's not gonna change there. It's all about trying to catch them before they make the price, because as you can kind of see here, it's a dollar 15. And then once it drops down a band, it's, you know, 365. And then once it drops down another band, it's seven. And then once it drops down again, I don't have any major rehabilitation, but I can go back a slide, it's...
14.
14, yeah. So that's where you can see it. So as you can see, as it drops off, it gets pretty expensive, but then it starts to kind of flatten out, unfortunately.
And what we determine we're gonna do in reconstruction in a given year is also driven by what available funding there is.
Yes.
Right? So if you don't have large chunks of available resources to do major rehabilitation, because you're talking at such a high price, then you really have to look at preservation. So you're not able to really address those lower bands much at all, because there's just not enough funding to go into doing that full reconstruction project of, you know, any great length within the roadway.
So that's when we get a little further, I'll, that's where we've been the last three years, is because we've been so far underfunded, we haven't really made much of an effort for some of these other ones, because they're already down there. So we've been focusing on trying to grab what we can grab out of these top three bands and bumping them up. Ideally, there's a percentage breakdown that we'll get to on how much you'd spend on preventative style maintenance versus rehabilitation stuff, but we, and we are nowhere near what the goal should be for that, but it's kind of the only way we've been able to work. So this is currently...
Now, that's just the pavement itself, the pavement, the top pavement portion. But we've got roads that are so old, that the bottom, you know, down below the base material...
That's reconstruction.
Yeah, but I mean, that has a big factor that we haven't addressed some of those in...
So this is the full cost of the road, not just the pavement?
Yeah.
So when it gets to reconstruction, that means you're redoing the base, you're redoing all of that.
When we're looking at it, I mean, when you're, you're looking at the bands, that's the, that's just the pavement portion of, of the road, but the base material is, has a, you know, if we had a newer road, it's either that we've done a reconstruction of it.
Yep.
We've looked at the base, done something with the base, so now we know what's there. But some of these that we have are really in, I mean, let's go out there and wonder how the pavement even holds up at all.
And, and that's part of it. It is all part of it. That's why reconstruction is called reconstruction, is it is expensive as it is, because that does take into account any base work that has to be done. And sometimes it's more than this. So these are just the range. Every band here, this is an average of what the treatments in that band cost. So reconstruction could be $30 a square yard, and it also could be 18. So this is kind of an average, an industry average of where we're at right now. If there's a road where we had to, say, box out and do a whole foot of gravel and a base like we had to do on Maryland, it becomes more expensive than $20 a square yard. But, and that's what's, so this is a very simple concept, but it can also be very intricate. It's one of the most simple, intricate things that I've ever come across, because on, on the baseline, on, on, for face value, it, it is simple. And it's simple to understand what you have to do to improve. But then, there's so many different variables in it that it does kind of change it, where you have to kind of step back sometime and just kind of make sure you're still facing your north star of where you want to go with it. So this is where we currently are. We have a very small amount in what was called a deferr, one where we don't have to do anything to it. Then we have, again, I won't read all the numbers off for you guys, you guys can read it, but that's where we're at in routine, and we were able to get a lot into that the last few years. Then right here is our, our smallest amount, and this is the problem that we're starting to run into now, because the last few years with being underfunded, we spent so much money focusing on preventative and routine maintenance that we kind of used a lot of this up. So unfortunately, now going forward, we don't really have a choice but to start to aim to these. It's an old saying I used, I heard with somebody I used to work with, and we took all the gravy and all we're left with are the potatoes now. We took all the stuff that we, we could do, but now's the time we gotta start focusing on this. So in town, we have about 38% above the complaint line and 62% below. In an ideal, healthy network, you'd be trying to look at 80% above and 20% below. And that would be with a town average of a 78 roughly, a 78 PCI is, and it would be a healthy network that you'd be aiming for to have that breakdown. We currently, we'll get to it, but right now, we're at a 63. So we'll get back there. But right now, we have to focus, because we're so far off, we have to put more effort into these roads that are further off. Granted, preservation's great, and you want to put 80% of your work into preservation, that's the goal, but that's the goal on a healthy network. We don't have a healthy network right now.
So just so I'm clear, like, how do you evaluate? And in case anybody asks me, is it thickness, is it how many holes, like?
It's all of that, yeah. There, there's a process. And a few years ago, we had a scan done by a company that, that's what they do. They come and they scan the roads. And we actually have a person that took my old position in engineering, Alec. He worked for a company that did that. So he's trained on doing that. And there's, there's a formula, and there's a spreadsheet, and a database that he's got here that he will work with. And he goes out, and he's trained to look at the roads, not subjectively, he just, he looks at them, and he's really good. And it is, it's potholes, length of pothole, length of cracks, types of cracks. And he plugs it all in, and then it comes out with a number. So that's kind of how it's based. It's actually really interesting how it happens, but you do have to make sure it's a trained person or a robot. There's camera robots that can do it too, for some companies, to stay, make sure you stay uniform throughout the whole town, because it can be easy to go on a good road or a bad road and then get thrown off.
So at what point are you, I know you're kind of saying where we're at right now, and some of these roads are needing major to complete reconstruction there. At what point are we chasing our tail that we've, we're focusing on these ones, which are needed, don't get me wrong, but now we're lacking on preventive maintenance on the other ones there, so they become into that deterioration?
That's pretty much where we're at right now. With, with our current funding, we have some slides to show that that's exactly where we're at. We can either do preventative stuff, and then the problem is you'll drop some of these, they'll slide into this, but we don't have enough money then to spend a few years to try to get a lot of roads out of reconstruction, because then by then, you've dropped on the preservation side. So you need to have enough to make sure you're targeting it all. And I have a couple of slides coming up that will kind of show what numbers would be good for that.
And so this goes to the, the budget presentation, the budget request. So we have built into the budget the request of 1.6 million, right? And then on top of that, the town aid road of the $258,000, right? So that's a $1.8 million investment into our roads, and that can start, start us moving, and he has some slides that he'll go over, where that can start moving us in a direction of starting to, to shift the needle, right? It's not gonna happen overnight, it doesn't happen in one day. He has another slide that'll go over what is our actual backlog. That number's a bit scary. But it can start shifting what that, but it's gonna mean that the council and the town is going to take a, a long-term, dedicated approach to that investment in order for us to start changing the dial on our overall health and well, and condition of our roads, right? And it's just that long-term investment. So he's gonna go over what these service life and PCI and all, what, what those mean, and then we'll go into some of those numbers. But the numbers that we're gonna go over tie into that. What is, you know, how did we come up with the budget request for the upcoming year? And so while we're not showing you lists of roads, we're showing you where and how that was developed for a number, so that way we can, he has lists of roads ultimately, but those change, because as he showed with the cone, winters have a different effect on different roads, right? Water, you know, long periods of water infiltration will have a different impact on a roadway. And so that list may change, right? And once you put a list out to say, the road is gonna get paved this day, or this construction season, and ultimately, something bumps it because of a, a new condition that it's turned out on another road that has a higher usage. You know, we look at traffic volume, we look at whether it's a major connection road, we look at all those factors to determine the overall public safety of that road. It's difficult to, to shift and reprioritize, right? So he maintains that road-by-road health network of the actual system, but this is how that 1.8 million, $1.8 million gets developed and determined what's the best utilization. How do we effectively start to change that dial?
And I got, I got one question, and it was actually on the previous slide. If you look at the, and how many do we have that are, what's our percentages below the serviceable line?
Below 30? There's not many. I, I don't have that number on me. I want to say it was like three roads. So we don't have any that are down that far. And they were, they're short, short roads. And they're, I think, to be honest, I think there's only one that's at 30, and there's nothing below it. There's some that are like 31, 32, but we don't, I, I looked quick, and I can always try to look back on my, I have my Excel sheet that's got everything. And it was only one or two segments of road that were at 30, yeah. The last one that went away was Cape Ron Street, that was below, and that was a 12.
Yeah, because I did, I did the quick math on those percentages and didn't add up to 100%.
Yeah, so that's because of deferr, because deferr, I don't have the percentage listed as deferr.
Okay.
On deferr, yeah.
So that's a brand-new pavement?
Yeah, I just, that my box was too small to make the percentage fit in there.
Okay.
So yeah, that's why that one didn't add up. So remaining service life is like PCI, but it's a little bit different. So the goal is to add new life to the road network every year. So every year, one mile of road loses one year of life, which is kind of like people even. Every year, we lose...
It's like depreciation.
Yes, exactly. So Killingley's paved road network is, so this is our paved roads, is 121.67 miles. So every year, we lose 121.67 mile years. For the average condition rating to not decline, our annual work program needs to add at least 121.67 mile years of new service life to the network. So it's a pretty simple calculation. It's the miles of a particular treatment, the service life extension of that treatment, and that equals mile years added for service life. Here's kind of a quick example. So the routine category, if you did one, so this is all, these are all for one mile. If you did one mile of a routine work, you gain two and a half year, mile years, and then at a cost of $17,000. And then you can see how this goes up. A reconstruction, you can gain, for one mile, you can gain 17 mile years, but it costs a lot more. And that's per mile. And then over here is a little bit more of a breakdown, so we can get kind of an apples-to-apples. So this is what one mile year costs for this treatment. So one mile, you divide this out, one mile years, $7,000 for routine maintenance, but then reconstruction is a lot more. Granted, you do get a bigger bang, but it's not necessarily a bigger bang for your dollar, because you're more than double the cost. But going back to this, is these bands, is, there's only certain treatments that, they only work in certain ones. The, the big part of pavement management, the, they're saying is the right road with the right treatment at the right time. So some of them, you can kind of get away when they, when they get right on the edge, sometimes depending on the... So, some of them, you can kinda get away when they, when they get right on the edge, sometimes depending on the specifics of the road, or if you do a little bit of work in certain areas, sometimes you can kinda, you can kinda fudge what treatment you're gonna use. But it's not, for the most part, it's pretty much whatever's in that category. It can only be done on certain things. It's, it's, you know, you can only do certain types of work when it's in here, and then it goes, pretty, kinda like working on a house. You know, you have to choose, there's only certain things you can do, and sometimes you have to go to the next repair. So that's kinda, that's a breakdown of that. So now, this is gonna get to, so, going back to that, just as more of an explanation of remaining service life and how it compares to PCI. Remaining service life is a simple deter, a simple way to determine whether a road network is improving or declining every year. And in order to do that, you figure out if you're, um, what the change is. If you're positive, then you're increasing, and if you're negative, then it's decreasing. RSL is different than PCI. PCI is a specific rating for a specific segment of road, and in total, the average condition for your town ranking. So you've gotta think of PCI as like a number on a scale. Just because you can get it to change, doesn't mean what you're doing to get it to change is healthy or sustainable. So now, think of remaining service life as a healthy diet and good exercise routine. You have to focus on the remaining service life, and PCI will come. So that's kinda how the two are, they're not a direct correlation, but that's how they are related. So you basically have a PCI as a goal, and then the remaining service life is the means to get to that goal, if that makes sense. So this is kind of our historic breakdown for the last few years. Um, in two thousand nineteen, it shows we did six miles of preventative and one mile of major rehabilitation, and it cost two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. We only touched six percent of the town road network, we only added forty-eight, uh, mile years, and that means we had a net loss of seventy-three. So then, in two thousand twenty, we had a little bit more routine maintenance. And then, this line right here is the, the breakdown between preventative and rehabilitation work. So we were very heavy on preservation these two years, with five point set, or five point three seven in routine, and six point seven eight in preventative. And then, only just under a quarter mile in major rehabilitation. And that cost four hundred and twenty-two thousand, we got up to ten percent of our road network, but still only added sixty-six mile years, and we were still at a net loss. And then, two thousand twenty-one, we did twelve miles of routine and three point one of preventative, and then, a little bit more of rehabilitation for five hundred and, basically, five hundred eighty-nine thousand. And we got up to thirteen percent of our road network, sixty-nine, and we still lost at a little over half a million dollars. We still lost ground. So for this current year, which is the money that you guys allotted last budget time, that we were able to hold over for construction season, which has worked out very well, because we've got on a lot of schedules early for contractors, so that's been a, a really good plus. We've backed down a little bit on our percentages of preservation, but we've increased how much we're gonna do in rehabilitation. And with all this, it's one point four seven million dollars. We're at twelve point eight four percent of our road network, and we're finally at a positive. So this year, we're gonna make ground, not a lot, but it's, we're not losing. So, we're not even back to where we started last year with, with, with this. So it's not really to be too, too excited about, but at least it's not going the wrong direction anymore.
It's a green number.
It's a green number, with a lot of, a lot of red numbers. So, on this, just kinda for example, in two thousand and twenty-one, there was, of, of our work done, ninety-four percent of the work done was on preventative work, and six percent was done on rehabilitation. But, the cost, cost fifty-three percent for preservation and forty-six percent of the cost. So even though it was only six percent of the work, it ended up being forty percent of the cost. So that's kinda, unfortunately, it shows when you get down to that next bracket, how much more it actually can cost. So then, and ideally, the same thing like we touched on a little earlier, you'd be at roughly eighty percent would be up here for both cost and miles, and then twenty percent would be down here on a, on a healthy network. So, this is kinda how we, how we come up with what we ask for, like Mary was touching on. These percentages over here are based on what we currently have in each category. So if we were to spend the money equally on what we have, and try to be positive, as close to positive as we could get with the way the, the breakdown, this is, you need one point eight three six million dollars. And that would just, in theory, hold maintenance. I know, and this is where it changed a little bit, cause so this is the percentage part, cause you can look at this one and say, "Well, we held even at one point four, why is it one point eight to hold even now?" Cause the percentages changed. This shows that we're trying to get more towards reconstruction, rehabilitation, to increase our network. Doing stuff like this is very similar to, this goes back to the, the scale idea. We can get the PCI to change, but it's not sustainable. If we kept doing this, we would run out of roads to do preservation work on, and we wouldn't have enough to do in rehabilitation. So that's where these three slides kinda all go together to show why it's important, the percentages are important, as well as what you're doing and the total amount of money. So if we had a healthy network, and say we had a seventy-eight PCI, we would only actually be asking for one point three million, not one point eight million. Because that would allow you to have the correct target percentages, and you still gain, it, it holds even. So it shows that the preventative stuff is cheaper, but we can't, unfortunately, don't have that luxury, because we don't have enough roads in the preventative range to be able to pull this off. So, going forward over here, this would be your, your long-term goal. Once you got a healthy network and you caught back up, you would come over here, and this is how you would do it. You'd have a forty and a forty, so you'd have an eighty-twenty split. And you would still be asking for almost one point nine million, but then you would actually be gaining on your network every year. This is pretty much the target for what you wanna gain. To be able to gain on your network and make a difference in a short amount of time, you need about fifty-two mile years added every year, is what you wanna add to. If we wanted to do this with a, this, and this is doing it with a healthy network. If you wanted to do this with our current network and to get to fifty-two, you would need two point six four million dollars annually. With our current one to actually start, instead of just maintaining, to actually start making good progress, you would need one point six four million. This just kinda goes back to this, this shows our backlog of what we have in each category, how much, so this would be, if we were to spend, if we wanted all our roads to be perfect, how much would we have to spend in each category to get there? And we would have seven hundred thousand in routine, three hundred thousand in preventative, one point six million in minor rehabilitation, one, or four point nine million in major rehabilitation, and ten point, or, yeah. So ten point, yeah, pretty much eleven million dollars in reconstruction. And then, this, this kinda shows a snap. In the fall of two thousand seventeen, Killingley had a sixty-seven point two one out of a hundred, when we first had that scan done. And the fall of twenty-one, with the work that we've done, the depreciation that we've had, we have a sixty-three point two two. So, the average, Killingley's average condition rating dropped by three point nine nine PCI in the last four years. Over the last four years, Killingley spent one point two six nine five, six nine million on paving, and we still went backwards. We currently have a backlog of eighteen million dollars, eighteen point five million. And it would take twenty-one years' worth of funding at the current level, just to get to an eighty-five, if nothing else depreciated in between. So if you wanted to do it all in one year, it would take twenty-one years' worth of, of funding to be able to get to an eighty-five. And, and it sounds like a lot, and I don't want anybody that's either here or anybody that's listening to think, "Well, it's a lost cause." It's not. There was a town in Massachusetts in two thousand and ten that had a PCI of a sixty-eight, and they had a paved network of a hundred and thirty-one miles. So both things very comparable to Killingley. In two thousand and twenty, they went from a sixty-eight to an eighty-five. They, they pulled it off, they did the, they did this, and they're at eighty-five right now, PCI.
What was their annual investment in roads?
Three point five million dollars.
Annually, for that ten-year period?
Yes. So it's doable, but, again, and at some point, either we have to pay for it, or stop complaining that our roads are bad. Those are kinda your two options.
So the approach that we've brought to the town council at this point, at one point eight million, while it's not the three point five, you know, it's starting to make a little bit of movement in the direction. But again, it's looking at that, what's the long-term investment and long-term goal, um, in order to be able to start, uh, turning the dial, changing the condition and the overall health and well-being of the roads. Um, you know, we unfortunately went for a long period of time where we were really reliant on town aid road funds, ta- state grant funds that have dwindled over the years. And that has really hamstringed the amount of investment that the town has been able to put into actual, um, significant road reconstruction. We've had to, you know, one of the roads that is showed up in, um, the current year number, the one point four million number that, um, he showed earlier for current year, um, is saving town aid road for, um, that we saved up over the years for Cranberry Bog. So we've had to take years of saving money for a specific road in order to be able to get that road done, which means you're putting off investment on other roads, right?
And some of that one point four is also utility work that was done in town, that we have taken the in lieu of price from the, the utility company and put that towards, back towards the road. Which is a very good, um, thing to do if we can do it. And that's where sometimes it's hard to necessarily plan out, um, down the road, where you're gonna go with the next three years. Because sometimes a utility job will come up on a road that maybe is right at the beginning of reconstruction, but you have the money available, so it makes sense, they're either gonna fix half the road and leave you with the other half, or you have to hop in and...
Do the whole road.
Do the whole road. And, and that's one thing in the budget process that I do, is I try to take with the money that, from, from the budget, or, and capital, everything added together, I try to leave a buffer to have that ability. Last year, we were able to do that on Catherine Avenue with Connecticut Water, because we had a little bit of, of money that's there. So it's a buffer, it doesn't go away, it just will roll over to the next year.
Stays in road renewal.
It's nice, because sometimes things like that happen, and if we couldn't have done it, it wouldn't have been the end of the world. But half of Catherine Avenue, for the whole length of it, would have been brand-new, and the other half would have been at a forty-seven. So it kinda really wouldn't have made sense to do it.
And we can leverage that money, uh, we can get farther with the, um, money that we get in lieu of than what Connecticut, so what they pay for half of the road, um, we can potentially get a, more of that road completed, um, by leveraging our own resources and doing, you know, we do some of the work ourselves, um, and also, um, just in our general contracting. So, we've been able to better leverage and capital stack that money to be able to complete entire roads for, lower out-of-pocket cost for the town by leveraging those utility in lieu of payments for those same roads. So that has sometimes leveraged roads to a sooner application, they still need the reconstruction. Um, it gets the entire, um, road done. But, um, you know, absent that additional funding, we might not have done it that year, you know what I mean? Um, because of conditions.
And we have a lot this year, I don't know the exact number off, the last two years, we've had a very good amount with that. So if it wasn't for that, we would not be positive this year. I know that for a fact. So, it, and we would have been even further off last year if it wasn't for that. So that's a big part of it, which, we shouldn't rely on that, that should be a bonus. That should be what gains us ground, not just making us hold even. And before we get too far into questions or anything, to go back to the public comment to address, uh, Laurel Drive. Laurel Drive is currently at a thirty-seven, so it is, it's in reconstruction. But, without re-saying it again, it kinda is where we explained it is on this particular slide. Um, and that's, and it was, and in defense though of Laurel Drive, it was actually on the pavement plan last year. The reason why it didn't get done is with the amount of rain that the contractors had, we got bumped off. And it was a smaller job, which I understand, so unfortunately, we got put to this spring. That was kinda out of our control. But in the meantime, it also is a thirty-seven, it kinda puts us right in the middle of this. And it's not necessarily a through road, I know a lot of traffic goes through that one section, through the neighborhood, but it's a different importance than some of our through roads. Not that it's not important, it's just at a different level. And I'm sure a lot of people probably don't like to hear that, but it's...
It's looking at the overall traffic volume on the individual roads, you know? So we have to rank all of our roads based on traffic volume and point of connections, right? So that's where we're, we look at, and that, that's just the evaluation. It's, it, you know, like any piece of equipment, how much do you use it? Road is the same way, how much is it used? Um, and that helps to determine, uh, where it lands in some of that priority factor.
There is a formula that, I, it's kinda more backend than what this presentation is. It's a cost-benefit, it's called a repair priority. And it kinda takes into account the daily traffic and the condition of the road, and how much it improves it, and how much the improvement will help the network as a whole. And it, it's a whole algorithm, and it comes out with a number, and that, that number is, well, a lot of times, what some of these decisions are based on, and how, how much, it, it kinda, it's a bang for the buck is what it's trying to accomplish. So you look at that, and you look at RSL, and you put with those two numbers together, and that kinda will determine unfortunately on some of those ones, well, it's in this bucket, we can let it go a little bit further, because it's not gonna get any more expensive. And again, I know that's not popular here, the people that'll live on that road, but, again, it's the most responsible thing to do throughout the whole network.
So getting back to the public comment, where, where was Laurel Drive on the list? I gotta ask that.
So that one, because it was, because it was slated for last year, the contractor has it on the schedule for the upcoming year, but it won't likely be until towards the end of the year.
And I've told you that before.
And again, if, if, so one of these pro, it's a segment of the road, it's not the entire road, it's a segment of the road, right? It's a shorter segment of the road. And, as with every construction cycle, um, last year, we had a very wet season. They're not paving in the rain. Um, it delay, it ends up causing delays. Um, if it delays out too long, then those projects can sometimes get bumped to the next year. So the intent is that that prod, that segment of the road will be on, it's slated with the contractor for this upcoming construction cycle, but towards the end of the summer.
And we...
That's, that's what I'm gonna get though, we, we got bumped toward the end of the year last year.
But they didn't get bumped, they didn't get bumped for another road though. They got bumped because it physically ran out, and we actually, as a town, Robert and myself shut it down. We had the option to do it the week before Thanksgiving, and we chose not to.
No, no, that would not have been the right...
So, we could have done it, and we wouldn't have had a public comment tonight, but we chose to shut it down and wait for a better time to do it. So that's also one of the negatives that you hear, that, that, that you have to weigh out.
Right, cause you have to determine when it gets to the cold weather, if you're gonna try and squeak it in before the asphalt plants close. And then, you know, you can't do anything until the asphalt plants reopen.
So there, that's a whole, our aspect of it.
Utility work. What kind of advance notice do you get with them?
You get about it a couple months. Uh, you hear, it's about around this time of year is when you really know some of their plans.
And that's where, but, the, the road that they're gonna do is not necessarily in your planning that you have planned.
Not always, no. And, but that's where, again, that's where there's some, there's some movement. Sometimes, it, sometimes we'll take the money and we sit on it for two years. We've done that before, until it gets closer to in-line where we wanna do it. But they give us that money, and we can't go to another road. It's not like we can get money from one road, and it doesn't need work, so we're gonna take it and go somewhere else. I've asked, and we can't.
Nope.
I thought, I've asked, I've asked the question.
So, and, and so what they're required to do, the utilities are required to put in a, the, the temporary patch, right? They have to pave it to a temporary patch condition. Um, it's the final pave that they give us payment in lieu of, right? And so sometimes those patches can, that, that, uh, temporary patch can hold for an extended period of time, and give us an opportunity to have enough money to be able to do the full amount of the, the full scope of the project, the full road. Cause honestly, it's, if you're gonna go in there and tear up half the road, you might as well go in there and tear up the whole road, and get it just done and over with. And that's one of our goals, and one of our approaches to a road is, we wanna get in there, do the whole thing, and get out of there, right? Um, it's, it's just makes, it's, it's the best bang for your buck if you're gonna go in there. So sometimes that has been the opportunity. And when you have utility work, sometimes, depends on how much utility work they're doing in a road, it may take them almost an entire construction season, which means, we're not gonna slate it for paving that year, because your temporary patch needs time to settle anyway. You don't just go right in and repave over a pa, uh, a tem, you know, the, the temporary patch. You gotta wait for the settlement to happen. So you're really not paving that until the next construction cycle almost anyway. Um, so you almost have a year delay on the timing of when they're gonna do a road, and then we're, when we're gonna slate it for pavement.
Now, what about on our side, do we give the utilities a notice to say, "We're, we're looking at paving..."
Well, we look that with, um...
Seasons, do we go out and give them a notice, like, "We're gonna be doing a full reconstruction, if you've got plans..."
Yeah.
Are you gonna, you know?
That's actually gonna...
Give them a notice, I don't...
That's what we did with the... That's what we did with Reynolds Street.
Yeah.
And that's why we've put the proposal, we're putting the proposal before the uh, Town Council for the ARPA fund use. On um, redoing the sewer line in um, in um, Reynolds Street. Because when we approached um, Connecticut Water about Reynolds Street, they said, oh, we wanna do our water line. So we can tag team that one. It's gonna cost us significantly less money by doing that project at the same time as them doing the water line project. Um, and we can um, work together.
That's got the box call written, it's got the water line.
That's a complex project.
You wouldn't have any more utility work.
You could, you could if you really wanted to. I know.
How many other utilities are there, you know, just?
And that's kinda, it, so actually it worked out well because when I reached out to Connecticut Water to give them what we were gonna be doing for the year. They saw Connecticut Mills on there and then once they realized that they weren't gonna be able to do their water work on Reynolds Street this year. Cuz they were potentially waiting for sewer, they said, well, we'll take the money that we were gonna use for that and we'll go to Connecticut Mills ahead of you. So now Connecticut Mills was originally gonna be one that I want to do early summer, but now that'll be more towards late summer because we have to give them time to do that. And they still have to go through all their approvals. So it's not necessarily set in stone, but this is where we're kinda waiting on them. We're waiting cuz we think that they're gonna do it. And then if we wait till say June and they say, ah, we can't do it till next year. Well, then Connecticut Mills goes off the list because we're not gonna pave it a year ahead of them being able to do a water line. And then it will change and then we'll find somewhere else to go for the same thing. So that's where it's hard and you, you try to get all the scheduled or done early. And you don't wanna push your contractors around, but something like that could happen. And then I have a guy that thought he was gonna be paving that road and I gotta. Tell him that he's not coming in for that road anymore. You know, usually something like that happens, we'll try to find something similar for our road network. So that was gonna be a re, uh, that's a major rehabilitation. We would try to do that with another major rehabilitation. So it's the same type of work for our network, for the same amount of money invested. Like I wouldn't then try to take it and then go do a bunch more preservation. Once it's kinda set, I wanna try to keep it in those buckets and not just move it around, but that's, that's part of it. And, and that's kinda one of the things where the list of roads, I have a list of roads for, for this year, but for the money that we're asking for. That list probably won't be developed until around Christmas time. Cuz we let winter start to come and then I start to develop a rough draft. Then we talk to the utility companies and kinda feel them out and then we go from there. And then come January, February, we see how the roads are holding up and then that might change. We might have one that falls apart faster than another one that. We need to swap out. Um, the bigger pavement ones are nice to be able to try to talk to the guys in January and February. And get the, on their schedules earlier. Some of the preservation guys, it's less intensive work, so the scheduling is a little bit easier. And um, so they're, they come in a little bit later. And because it's a little bit cheaper sometimes, they're the buffer. Currently with the mu, the funding we have, they're kind of a buffer unfortunately for like this year. I did all the prices for the major rehabilitation and construction first and what we had left was going to preservation, just because of, we didn't have enough.
Well, like when we talked a few times, if we're allocating money in the budget, you wanna have something that you can have available, really April first type of thing.
Yeah.
If we only have the money and by the time it gets approved and we're waiting for the approval in July, you can't get these guys lined up.
No, they're, they're already busy.
We, or whatever's budgeted, what we're doing right now is probably looking at money that you're gonna be using.
A year from now.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Yep.
So that you have a full funding, so that now you can go and talk to the guys, get them on that.
Yes. Yep.
Major reconstruction list.
And, and some of them are, are, if we end up starting to fund it properly with the amount that we're gonna be going out. We're gonna have a lot of advantage on timing and who we can get and when we can get them. Because we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna be a bigger fish. And that's a problem that Killenley's always had before cuz the amounts and the time that it's been available. Unfortunately, on their schedule, we haven't been important, which is understandable from a business aspect of it. So now it's kind of a snowball. Once it starts going, everything will start going. It just needs the, the initial cha-ching to get going.
We were always paving in October. It was always.
Yes.
Major reconstruction work was always in October and everybody ran out of time. So right now, we're in a pretty good spot is.
Well, and that's what happened to Laurel Drive. Because it was a smaller job, we had other jobs that were a little bit bigger that were able to get done. But because Laurel Drive was a smaller job, it kept getting bumped down and next thing you know, we were into October and then, and it ended up waiting.
You don't have to hear it. Well, you, you get a.
Oh, I hear it from you.
We get calls. No, they call us as well. You know, I have conversations with them as well. Matt has taken calls from them as well and. And we recognize that that is, you know, they, it's right in front of their house, right? And this is a road that they drive on. This is where they're accessing their house and we rec, we respect that. We understand that. We're not trying to push them off. It's just, it's the reality when you're looking at the total scope of the overall road network. You're balancing all of these roads at the same time. And you're balancing weather impacts to a paving schedule. And when you are a, a smaller fish in the um, in the pond of paving, right? When you're a smaller consumer on that list, you, it's easier for your contract to say, contractor to say, um, we'll get to you. Um, I got a bigger project going on in another town. He's gonna invest his resources over there. That's a business decision. And um, sometimes.
Understandable one.
And understandable. And sometimes we have to take that backseat. Um, we, I know Matt and Rob push these, push our contractors all the time. He, they are good at holding their feet to the fire. Um, they press them to get them in here. They don't, you know, just roll over and say, fine, you know.
I think it's one of Robert's favorite things to do.
I think it is. But um, at some point, you know, when you have a, when you have a, a construction cycle that's impacted. That's, has, has 27 or more lost days. Um, some of these smaller ones end up not getting completed in that cycle and get cycled to the next. Um, because it doesn't, economically, it doesn't make sense for them to come in and roll out for just that one little small segment. And then pack up ship and, and, and roll to another job. They're gonna go for the bigger jobs.
So based off of the proposed money that we have in our budget, uh, in the proposed budget, uh, if we go, we prove that. Um, we're looking at, we need to approve that type of funding for about the next 10 years, it looks like. If my math is right.
Uh, that's just to maintain.
And that's just to maintain.
That's just to maintain.
So, so what would it look like if we want to get ahead and start getting to that 80, 80, 20?
You, uh, 2.64.
That's a 2.
Yeah, you could probably back it down a little bit. 2.64 is getting you 50, a gain of 50. Um, if you split that in half and you split the difference to 2.3 would be again.
And so. That's 2.64 for 10 years?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and again.
Roughly that two and a half million dollar mark.
Right.
For an investment time period of 10 years.
Okay.
To be able to start really shifting the dial.
And again, if you could get to a 75, 78, and, and this isn't to pick on any, any other communities, but uh. If you got to a 60, a 75, 78, it would be noticeable. It would, you would drive through the region and it would be vastly noticeable. I've gone to that town in Massachusetts that's at, at an 85 now and it's amazing. It really is.
What town is that?
It's Lexington. So, but they were at a 65, I mean a 68. So they, they were, their roads looked just like ours did in 2010.
Gotcha.
But, and it, you notice it when you drive from other communities into that one, just the, the road network and you would, it would be worth it. It's not something that you wouldn't notice for sure.
Now, in comparison to other towns, are we? Because I'm, and when I was doing home care, I drove over lots of, through other towns and.
So it's kinda hard cuz I don't, I don't think that many local towns have done this extent of research, so I don't know what their PCIs are.
Well, I, I, having driven on them and, and driven on ours, I would say theirs were probably.
There's a few that are, are around or better, but they have different, they have different investments. They may be smaller communities with smaller miles, but they don't maybe have. You know, as, as many students or they don't have a high school or they don't have as many town buildings. So that changes where money is available. They might put in more money per mile than we do, but they don't have some of the other. Heavy lifts that Killenley does have and the mill rates are higher.
Their roads looked a lot worse then.
And that's also a thing too. There, there's one town that I know that's a local one that's uh, overall, just, just driving it is better than ours that we border. Um, and that's kinda, it, so that's, it is. It's, and then there's some that are a lot worse.
Yep, there's some that are a lot worse.
And it goes the same thing to winter. I know this is about not plowing and this is about pavement, but there's, you, you notice the difference. I, or at least I do when you leave Killenley in the wintertime, um, compared to some of the other towns. But again, it, we kinda should when you look at what we have to work with, so.
One thing I will say, um, just looking at, uh, comparing Lexington, Massachusetts to Killenley. Um, I'm sure the per capita income up there is quite substantially higher than what Killenley's is. Um, so I, I can understand that being more absorbable into a budget, um, you know, when the per capita income is substantially higher. Um, I do have one question you, back to the 1.4 for the 22 year.
Yep.
Um, do you know what the breakdown of that is as far as what came from the town budget? What came from utilities and what came from grant funding?
So it's about 258. I mean, sorry, 858 is from town, is the 258 which you guys had in the regular budget, then the 600 from fund balance. And then there was 300,000 from town aid road and then the rest of it was utility money. And town aid road, we don't get, that, that's a few years worth of town aid road that we had, that kinda, we were able to save other years to try to do a big push like this. When we got close, I didn't wanna use it all up right away and, and do out. I wanted to wait till we got a number that, that was like this to do a close number to show what it actually takes to break even. And I, I get the whole, um, you know, it's, it, the per capita income's higher, but that's why they were at 3.5 million. And I mean, for us to do 2.6 is, in order to make the roads better, that's what it's gonna cost. There's no way around it. Like, and that's why I think as a healthy network, if we aim for a goal of a 78. And in our rural area, a 78 would be really good around here. It wouldn't necessarily be the 85 that they have. But that's, that's the way that you try to pull back on that cost instead of just kinda putting it off to, well, they can pay more. Well, yeah, but it also, we have to pay too, so.
Um, wanna thank you guys for the snow removal process this year. They always seem to come at a bad time in between all the effort that you put in to keep the streets open and whatnot. I thank you for that, so.
Thank you.
Um, one other thing, Main Street, they just paved that, was it three years ago? And by like Davis Park, the manhole covers are like soon enough that they were done, they're like an inch below the surface of the pavement.
Yeah. That's the state thing, yeah. We try to stay with them and, and they go through and they talk to all the utilities ahead of time and they, they. It's kind of a process where if they need risers or whatever, but unfortunately, that's how, how they, the state just kinda does their milling fills. I hate that. I'm not trying to pawn it off, but I don't know exactly why they do, how they do it with the manholes. And that's one thing. So one of the roads that we're gonna do this year, uh, I'll give it away, it's gonna be Franklin, uh, East Franklin and Furnace Street. So we've already gone out and we've already bought all our manholes that are gonna go on there to reset them when they come through. It might, we're gonna have it done post, post pavement and there's a company that comes in afterwards and they cut a nice circle around. There's a few of them around, uh, West Palmer Street has one. And I believe, um, the Brooklyn WPCA paid a few years ago to have a few done on Route 6. And it comes out really, really nice. Um, so that's what our plan is there is, once that's done, there're gonna be new manholes where they have to be. And the old ones are gonna be raised and then paved flush. I'm not sure why the state does or doesn't do what they do with that, but that's what our plan is, so.
Um, one other question I had, I keep hearing this process of fogging. Uh, what exactly is that?
So it's a, it's basically a lotion for the road. We've done, we've done it a few times. I'm, it's actually what it is. And uh, it, it restores, it's a rejuvenator. That's actually what they call it. It's a rejuvenator. It soaks in, it puts some of the, the product back. How do I wanna explain this without going too much? Yeah, so refineries nowadays are a lot better than they used to be. So when crude oil gets refined, it's usually the stuff at the bottom was the oils that go to make an asphalt. Well, now that the refineries are so much better, there's a lot less good oils, you could say, that go to making asphalt. So there's a lot more of the oils that used to be in asphalt aren't anymore and this, the fog sealing does that. It puts some of the rejuvenator back in. It, it kinda adds flexibility. It basically is a lotion for the road. It adds like a flexibility to the road and it softens it back up to keep it from raveling and cracking as fast. And um.
After you do that, do you have to put a sealant over it, like a chip, chipstone or something?
Nope. You just seal it, let it dry for an hour and then you're ready to go.
Okay.
They actually have one too that's a, it's a plant-based one. We haven't used that one yet. And that's, so that's an all-natural one. Um, it doesn't have as many mile years to it. A regular typical fog seal gives you two. Um, that, it's a little bit less depending on where you use it and it goes on and it dries clear. I've seen it done, I, or I've seen roads that it had been done on. Um, and it definitely looks like it makes a difference. It, that's something that down the road, once we get more preservation roads, I wanna do, but we've been sticking to the regular, the regular fog seal for now. And we have a number of ta, uh, roads in town that we've done. I'm trying to think back if I can, I, I'm sure I'll miss some, but we did, um, Red Oak Drive. Pine Knolls, Davis Street, Maryland Street, Capron Street and Commerce Avenue are probably our, or Commerce Avenue is probably the most notable one. Just because of how, it was in town and after we did it, there was, you could tell where the cars tracked for a day or two. Um, but then it dried out and, and it, it does actually seem to really make a difference. So the, it's gonna be going on two years this summer from the first time we did it. So that'll be right where kinda the end of its life expectancy. So I'll wanna compare what that is. And there's a few of the spots on the roads where I had, where they, I had them not spray, like some small spots. So I'll be able to compare right next to it to see, cuz that was a new treatment for us in 2020. Killenley, we hadn't used that yet.
Now, now do the regular fog versus the plant, is there a difference in cost?
No, I want, I don't know exactly what the cost is for the, the plant-based one. I wanna say the plant-based one is a little bit more. Um, I haven't gotten a price on it, but um, it definitely, it's used in a lot of places where they're concerned about um, environmental impact. So it's another option, it's another tool in the toolbox to be able to use. So.
If you had a road near, you had a road near like a river or something.
Yeah, yep. Um, like I'd say like Pond Road. That goes between the two, that would be a great spot for it because then it's an all-natural product.
Or Bear Hill with.
Yes.
Come right up.
Yep. Yes, I know, right?
So regards to uh, treating like fog seal, which, thank you for explaining that cuz I, I had no clue. I, Mary explained it once and I couldn't remember it. Um, you know, and, and I will say, uh, before I get into my question there. An appreciation for um, kind of what you've said there because I think of the winter, when it came over to the winter time. Um, I, I live right on Broad Street, which Broad Street's always uh, plowed pretty easily, but to access my actual driveway, I have to come off of Hawkins. Which isn't always as well plowed. Um, and I've actually been out there with a shovel before to try to get my car in there. Shame on me for buying a car and needing an SUV. But um, so I can have an appreciation for trying to prioritize what's the most important. Um, and uh, you know, obviously we think all of our roads are important. We, we, I agree, you know? Uh, cuz obviously to me, Hawkins Street is important. But um.
Yeah.
But I can definitely appreciate what you guys do. Uh, with that said though, when it comes down to winter, and I know, uh, we've been. Uh, you know, the treatments that we put on the roads does affect our cars. Uh, how does that affect the road itself?
It does. It does dry. It seems that for a lack of, to simplify, it does seem to dry it out. The fog seals actually also seem to help prevent against that really good. The chip seals seem to hold up pretty good, but the new asphalt, whether it's the asphalt or the products on the road. And even if you guys look at any road that, even if one gets paved, it doesn't stay pitch black as long as it, they seem like they used to. And I know that's a very subjective thing to say and I've kinda, you know, it's been more recently in my life where I pay as much attention to pavement. But um, it definitely, and whether, I think it's a combination of both, but the, um, that's one of the things that the fog seals also try to sell, that they, they help prevent. The corrosion, some of the corrosion on that. So that's something that, if we go back to this, this first one, it's a, where is it? This one right here. This is your fog seal, right here, year two. So there may be times where you're, you pave a road, then two years later, you're there. But that's something that, it's almost, and that, and that's the hard part with budgeting. So you, you spend the big dollars to repave a road. Well, now in two years, you gotta take the fog seal price right off the top of what you have available cuz you gotta go back to do that. You don't have to and you can, sometimes there, again, there's a little bit of wiggle room on the years, but to do this correctly, that's kinda what. And then you're, you know, maybe another, again, I have it on here as three is a, another treatment, but you could maybe push out to seven, then you're there for crack sealing. To keep the water out. So even though you do bite that big investment of repaving, it, then you just set up where. This is why the, the funding's so important to stay because now you have to do all these other works to keep it, to keep it good, to keep your good roads good. And um, that's why the number is, that's how it wor, that's why it works out to be the way it is, is because you can just pay for it once. And then if you didn't have to touch it again, you'd be pretty good shape. But it's, it's like buying a new car. You then have to still do maintenance. And then if you didn't have to touch it again, you'd be pretty good shape, but it's, it's like buying a new car. You then have to still do maintenance on it, so.
But then you were talking about, but for right now where we are, you've got three years of town aid road in addition to the monies from the budget.
I don't have three years. We had three years at one point, but after this year, it will be gone. The only town aid road we're gonna have is.
What we're in right now, that's what we're getting.
It's not, it's, it's a little less than three years. I, it's three hundred, which is a little less than three years.
But I, but I mean, you had, that's what is, is a bigger hunk of change.
Yes.
Because we use more.
We saved up, we rolled over some of the town aid road in order to accomplish, uh, a larger, uh, major rehabilitation.
So now we start again next year and the town aid road always doesn't come in at the right time, even where.
So we always plan town aid road for the year after. That it's budgeted to come in. We always make sure that we have the money, so that, so again, that would be a July first. So it's just like the town's budget, the money that the town puts into the budget. We don't look to spend it that July one. We're looking at spending it in the subsequent construction cycle.
But that's what I'm saying, in this, in this, right now, what we're looking at, we've got more town aid road, so the budget, and then you add that. Now we're starting again, you cut the town aid road in half that's available that we save per se.
Right. And ideally, ideally, your town aid road wouldn't go into this plan. Ideally, your town aid road would be for full, full reconstructions. It would be for realigning corners. It would be for doing a box culver on Reynolds Street with impervious drainage. That's, uh, that would be your goal. That's what you're out down the road. That's with your two point six million to increase. And then your town aid road money should be road money made for actually improving the network. Like geometry-wise, drainage-wise, the, the big, big jobs. And that would be ideally what you would do down the road and then you would, this, this fifty number would hop up even higher.
That's what I'm saying, if you go to some point segregate this out, that the strictly paving work, we're gonna work with, within the town budget, whatever we get. Fund balance, mill rate, uh, maybe we get the rebuild, whatever, the rebuild America plan, we might get a windfall with that. I don't know.
All that money, yeah, would go towards your regular per pavement management and then the capital town aid road stuff should be, again, first off. Realigning corners or widening roads, um, stuff like that, like your big, big capital projects. But right now with what we're at and we're trying to slowly get there, we've been including capital into our pavement management plan. But ideally down the road, you would pull that out and it would be a separate, it would be four separate projects. I know it's a lot. It, like I said, and it looks like a big number, but when you look at what you're maintaining, it's, it really isn't. I know it's, it's easy to say that, but, and I think a part of it is, is it's not anybody's fault, but it's been a long time since anybody's really, I don't. There hasn't been a really in-depth look of what we need. And so that's why this number seems like, oh, where'd this number come from? It's always been there, but nobody found it before. Nobody really looked for it. That's the unfortunate part.
Well, that's why you're here right now.
Yeah.
So what, we need you to sit there at this time and, and make us aware of it.
Right, and that's where really Killenley, by taking that step in two thousand and seventeen, early two thousand and eighteen, by doing that street scan. That gave that base, that gave the foundation to be able to develop this actual plan and program to move forward, right? So that investment is what really allowed this to platform and at some point we may, we may say, you know what, I think it's time to redo that scan. To make sure that we're, that our numbers are driving, right? That we have that independent look and we, and we've, and we've re-looked at that to make sure that what we're calculating is really what. Is being calculated independently on the road system. But, you know, um, I think Matt and Alec do a really good job with trying to, uh, be as true to that calculation. That was done in that scan to keep these numbers as close to realistic, um, as what the, the network is. So, um, they work really hard on that, but you're right. I mean, we didn't, we didn't know what that number was before because we'd never done that independent evaluation. We'd never done that evaluation and we've never, uh, we've never had that, this level of in-depth, um, analysis. Between the different types of road, um, pavement, management treatments, right? Where, what's the impact of each of those treatments? And I think we've explored more treatments recently than we had previously looked at in the past. I think there's more treatments available now than what had been potentially done or available in the past to look at. So Matt and Rob definitely explore those options. Not that we look to be on the cutting edge of a new technology, like he said, with the plant-based one. He's watching it, right? We'll watch it for a while, let somebody else be the guinea pig.
Yeah.
Right? And then we decide whether or not it makes sense for our own network and if it's something cost-effective for us to implement within the system. But, um, you know, that's why I wanted to have Matt come and really go over this because clearly in this upcoming budget, the proposal that you have before you, it's a big ask. We recognize that. That's a, it's a big ask. Um, and it's an ask in the mill rate as opposed to just hitting the fund balance. But if you look at where this is, you know, the long-term duration, um, to hit fund balance over ten years for that. Um, you'd nearly wipe out fund balance, right? And so that's not a sustainable resource either. So how do we collectively come up to, what is the state sustainable use? And that's why with the fun, with the budget that I put before you, the, um, proposal is only to use four hundred thousand of fund balance. In offsetting that one point six million, right? So not all one point six million is necessarily in the mill rate. We have four hundred thousand that's being used by fund balance, so we can slowly kind of step in some of that approach. But, um, this starts to bring us to a level of being able to, um, maintain. And notch a little bit.
Yeah, and, and that's where, um, to go back to what Ray asked, if it was the two point six for ten years, it may not be ten years. It may, you might get three years into it and then you, you start to really make a swing and then, then we would be able to back down. Um, I know that has happened in Lexington before, like they, they get to a point and then they'll, they're, no, we don't, we don't need that amount again. So that, that could happen. It's just one of those, because of the variables, it's hard to necessarily say when that, that falloff would happen. With just breaking even on, uh, remaining service life or not graining, it's, it's not gonna go down. You have to make above twenty, uh, re-remaining service life to have even a potential in a few years for that number to start coming down. But, and then that's where after a few years, there's, you know, we, we re-look back at what our PCI is for a town. We see the, the change that we made and that's where you could dial back down. So this isn't one of those where it's, but then you're, you're battling inflation too of, of this. But, um, in general, you could look at it and you could dial it back down. And that's what these two, to me, are, are very important to show because where we're at, this is what we need to maintain. If we had a healthy road network, this is what we would need to maintain. So there is a difference and a benefit and, and one other thing I didn't touch on here. A goal is to touch about twenty to twenty-five percent of your road network a year. So that's on the high end, that's a quarter of your town every year. That, your taxpayers see that, they, every road that, there's a good chance that, well, one in four people you talk to should have had something done on their road. Which is good. You're getting out there. It's showing that there, that this isn't just a number that their, their taxes went up and they're paying for nothing. They, they will see the improvement. And like I said, once you get to about seventy-five or whatever, it would be noticeable in, in the region. Um, and that's, and then again, then you just watch it and then when there, there'll be years where if different things happen or whatever and we need to dial back. There's years that you could dial back and if you just maintained for that year, it's not a big deal because you've made positive for three years ahead of that. So like there is flexibility and it's just unfortunate where we're at right now, we're kind of starting from the, from the back.
Question. So when you go in and you do a full reconstruction, so you're gonna, you're gonna take an effect, you're gonna box the road out. You're gonna be putting better material back in. I'm sure you're gonna be using better pavement material. Uh, drainage is just gonna be addressed, so you're gonna hopefully.
Yep.
Remediate some of the water, um, issues that you're gonna have. Now, how does that, how does that affect your years of life to the road? I'm assuming that you're basing everything on your years of road, years of life in a road. Most of our roads are old and decrepit and the subbases are probably crap of what they had down the road or whatever. So does that, does that, does that actually extend your years of life?
It does. And, and that's something like that, you're looking at, you could be up to the numbers of like a twenty on, on what, but you're still going back there. You're still gonna go back and you're still gonna fog seal it in two years and you're still gonna crack seal it in five or six. Cause it's just, no matter what you do, there's, you're working with the earth and with the freeze thaw, it's gonna, it will crack.
On the fog seal, how long has that product been out? Is there like a?
I'm not sure when it came out. I, I know that Lexington has been using it since two thousand and ten. I do know that. So I don't know how long it's been out before that. And I've seen roads that they've done twice and I've seen roads that they did nine years ago and what that looked like. So it's a newer product, but not brand new. And like Mary said, we don't go to, when, when we have, we've had a few salespeople that have stopped by. And, um, it's a, it's a brand new product and it's kind of, oh, okay, let me know when somebody else does it. I'll go take a look at it. Um, and it does, and so the base, and that's the thing too. So if we did a mill and fill on an old road, that's not gonna have the same life extension as a complete reconstruction. Cause you're still dealing with that old underneath. But that's where it's important with what, which roads you choose to do that on. There's roads that you can do a mill and fill or mill it to dirt. That's an option that we've been using where you're, you're not doing a mill and fill. You're actually going back to dirt, but you're not reclaiming and tearing all that up. Because sometimes if the base is good and the asphalt just has fallen apart over the years, then. So a lot of our roads in town are what they call the cold mix asphalt from a long time ago where there, it's a different mix. And that was really good, but it was important to stay up on chip sealing it to keep it sealed from the water. And a lot of our roads, that hadn't happened for a long time. So, uh, Coomer Hill, for example, is one of those. That the road just, the base is okay, minus a few drainage spots here and there that could be fixed. But for the most part, the, the base is okay and the profile of the road is good, but it's just that actual asphalt is shot. So something like that, we would be, you could do maybe a mill and an overlay on because the underneath is good. But then you go to a road like Cranberry, Upper Cranberry Bog, it's, the base is gone. And that's where we've done, the last couple of years, we've done some drainage work and now this year will be, the road will be getting a full reconstruction. We actually have a little bit more drainage work to do this spring and that should be one of the first roads to get paved this coming summer. Um, and, and should be hopefully in May, as long as everything stays on schedule. But that'll be one of those roads that that was, it was too far gone, the rut, the rutting goes and that, and that's where it goes back to that first chart. Sometimes when you know you're gonna have to do that, you can take the money that it would cost you there and go save some other roads in between. And then get to that one later on. But yeah, it does, a, a brand new, there's nothing like a brand new road, that's for sure. But we don't have, if we, if we looked at that number, it would be a lot more than, than these ones to have done everything with that. And that's a big part of the pavement management stuff, which is, I, there's, there's a lot of people that this is, that live and breathe this stuff. It's actually, I've kind of found like a whole community on it of road managers that are really, really into this. And there's a bunch of webinars, a bunch of luncheon learns that, I mean, if anybody wants to, I can send you links for the YouTube channels. They're actually really, really interesting.
Now, is this all in Lexington?
It's not. It's not all there. But again, they, a lot of them do use that because it is such a good success, success story of where they were at. And that they focused on their roads and where they got to. Granted, because of how much they put in, they got there probably a lot faster than anybody else would, but it shows that it's possible. Um, there's an award that goes out every year for a community, um, who is, it's a nationwide award for pavement management excellence. And Lexington just won it in two thousand and twenty. So that was one of the reasons why they're, and that they are used as such a good example. Um, because, and that's a nationwide award and there's quite a bit of criteria that have to go into that. And it's not just from the town side. It actually has to do with, when the award goes to the community, it has to do with the elected officials. It has to do with, like, there's a lot of aspects to it and, um, again, a lot of the communities that win that. If you look at what they've done and how they've turned stuff around, it's, they commit to it and they commit to it and they stick to it. Um.
I, I do appreciate what, what you're saying and your, your care for the roads. But I think you just can't, I think you have to balance it with the per capita income, so it's sensible.
Agreed, agreed.
You know what I mean? I mean, you go back to the townspeople and say, okay, we're gonna do three million, two point six, two point eight million dollars a year. And their mill rate goes up.
Right, and that's why we bring to the town council and ultimately what goes to the townspeople. What, you know, we, the town council has a goal-setting session to determine what are the goals? What have you heard from the community as the top priority goals of the community? Roads has been on that list almost every goal-setting session for at least the last ten years. It's been roads and the cost of that, this is the raw data. This is the costs associated with those roads. It's up to the community to determine what is their palette? What can they, what do they feel comfortable with investing in, but ultimately knowing, how, what is that investment actually gonna do? Right? So to understand what the overall cost of that road network is. Um, you know, if you think that, um, three hundred thousand dollars is going to make a dent in. The condition of the roads, you know, you just, you need to understand perspective, right? And this helps to get the information out to the public as to what is the perspective of what is their investment dollars? What is their investment cost? Which is why we came for, my, my budget comes forward to you at one point six million. Four hundred thousand supplemented by fund balance because obviously there is a balance to be had. Um, in what the overall cost is to the community and there's only so much that the community can pay for. We're, we're not coming in at three point five million dollar ask because obviously that's not where Killenley is. You know, we're, we recognize that the community has whatever, you know, we have constraints on where we can go with the mill rate. And that's, we want to be respectful of that. But ultimately, we want to be able to bring to the council and the community what has been identified as a goal. And what are the costs associated with moving towards that goal? That's our job is to bring to the community, what are, what are the economic, um, needs? In order to achieve the long-term goals set by the community.
And we're just, again, this is just asking to maintain.
Right.
So not choosing to pay the dollars to maintain is like asking to not pay your full rent. Like you, you, you own this, you have to take care of it. So I don't know really how else to say it. Like I understand it's, uh, it increases, but that's, that's what it is. That's.
Right.
So, well, going with the Lexington thing, the one thing about that is we're in the same environment. You know, road wise, the weather affects pretty much the same. If they got the ward or whatever this was going on with somebody down south, it'd be totally different.
Well, one other community that you could potentially look at, which is a neighboring community that started to make a, a higher investment in their roads is Putnam. So Putnam recently diverted, um, uh, an amount from that they were receiving from their ash landfill revenue. They diverted that to rev, to, to, uh, roads. And so they've been making, um, more of a concerted effort in road investment. And you're starting to see some change. It's gonna take Putnam a long time, cause they went for a long time without really investing in their roads. But they're starting to make that conscious, um, change and investment and increased investment in their roads. And you're starting to see some of that, that road network change as far as, um, the condition of their roads. Putnam doesn't have a high per capita income. They have a lower mill rate than, um, than Killenley. Um, they have the same, they have a, a very similar, um, uh, economic status. As Killenley, they have a high pocket of, uh, low income, um, in their, in their downtown area. They have a distressed, um, population. They're considered an opportunity zone by the, by, uh, and designated by the feds. So, you know, they have similar demographics. They have very similar constraints on what they can raise in taxation in a given year. Um, and it's about determining how and where they can divert some of those funds. They could, they had previously been taking all of that rashly ash landfill revenue and they were offsetting the mill rate. They decided to switch gears on that and start moving it into an alternative funding mechanism, right? So, um, that's an example of a more local, closer to home. They haven't achieved the same success as, um, Lexington. They're still in that long-term investment process. But it's about changing that methodology around how your approach is. And it's a long-term commitment. As with any of our infrastructure, any of our assets, it's a long-term commitment.
And yeah, it is. It's a, it's a big change upfront, but once it's in place, it, it doesn't change that much. Once you have it in place, once you're maintaining it and once you start to improve it, then it stays. It's not like one or it's, you know, one point eight this year and three point five next year and six point seven the year after. It doesn't do that. It, it, granted, there's inflation and if you want to improve or increase, but again, it would be one of these, if I did the numbers and I came up with. Four hundred and two thou, four point two million and I had an increase of a hundred and seventy on here, I would back it down. Cause yeah, that would be awesome to make that much swing in one year, but that's not, that's not fiscally responsible for the tax. Cause it, yeah, that would be awesome to make that much swing in one year, but that's not, that's not fiscally responsible for the taxpayers either. So there is a balance, but you can't, I, I don't see how continuing to do this is the right choice for Killingley.
No, well, that's what I'm saying though. We've seen success and then you gotta look at the ability to pay. Maybe it's gonna take a little bit longer, but there is something out there and. It's brought about some of these products. Had that not happened over there, you wouldn't have seen the fog seal and some of this other stuff. So it's opening it up. And then the, the survey, the road survey, I think was really the, the starting point to make it.
That showed us where we were at and how far behind we are.
I don't think we'd be doing this right now.
And one thing that I will say for all the, the council, and this goes back to the other, the council before and um, that taxpayers. One thing with these communities that, the, the pavement preservation community, one thing that I hear a lot of road managers. Fighting is the people don't like the different treatments. They like a brand new road all the time and that is a whole another set of problems. And what's nice is we don't have that in Killingley. The council has never pushed or, or balked at it and the, and the residents, for the most part, haven't either. They understand. The preservation and, and how that is a benefit. So. Coming, it, it's actually nice. A lot of people have the, the two-headed problem. They gotta get out of the reconstruction mindset and then get more money. Luckily, we only are worried about our funding. So that's been actually a really nice thing and a lot of residents have been kinda excited or. Intrigued about, well, what does this treatment do and why are we doing this and, and stuff like that? So that's actually, uh, as this, that's been. Nice to work with on both to you guys and as the residents and, and I appreciate that because that makes it a lot easier. It's just the, I need a little bit more of it.
Mr. Wood.
So kinda piggybacking on Andy's um, sentiment, because I can appreciate what you guys are saying too and also his, his uh, remarks as well. You know, we, we have no prediction of uh, what happens, going to happen in Hartford or in Washington, you know, they, those guys are clearly. Out of touch with the people. Um, that's why we're seeing almost ten percent inflation at this point. Um, if we were, say, life, they, they get their act together. Um, and say that we are funding this now. Uh, next year, we're in the budget process again, we're all chit-chatting again about all this. Uh, would we be seeing an increase in the mill rate?
Um, so, so once we build in, right, so the, the intent would be that we bring forward, um, you know. Would there be an increase? Um, so we're bringing forward you one point six million, right? Um, we, with utilizing four hundred thousand, you know, um. We would potentially look forward in, you know, the subsequent year, maybe looking for, you know, like one point eight million. With still using four hundred thousand dollars of fund balance. So you're only increasing the ask on the mill rate of only two hundred thousand dollars. So it is an increase. But a, but a significantly smaller one to slowly increase and step to that. But once you get to a threshold of. The two million or the two point three million dollars, at that point, there's no additional increase to the mill rate. It's there, right? That's what they're funding at and it stays there until we reach to the threshold that we've made enough ground. That we can start to back down, right? So. It would take some time because we're not proposing to put it all into the mill rate all in one year, right? That, we wanna be. Fiscally responsible to the taxpayers and cognizant of everyone's financial constraints, right? So it's a smoothing effect to be able to slowly build it into the mill rate, right? I gotta go home and I gotta talk to my son who is a Killingley resident, right? And he's gotta pay a property tax bill, right? Uh, you know, and um, so. You know, I understand, I, I understand the financial constraints um, that everyone is facing, right? So we, we look to smooth that in in a slow progressive fashion. So that way it's not a massive impact to the mill rate in a given year. This year, yes, it's an impact, right? We're asking for a substantial increase in the current year um, as an individual bump. However, this year. The overall request on the mill rate with all the asks, including the Board of Education is still less than a mill, right? It's still less than a mill and I think there's room for the council to consider alternatives or, or whatever you deliberate around that, right? Um, so it is an initial ask that's gonna be a, a larger ask. But then subsequently it would be smaller smoothers until we reach that threshold.
And smaller jumps. It would, this is a large jump this one year.
It would be smaller jumps until you reach that threshold. Once you're at the threshold, once you're there at that, you know, two point three million dollars, you're there and it's no more change to the mill rate. It's in the mill rate at that point in time and you're not asking for additional, um, you're holding steady at that funding level. And then as we achieve the, the, the benefits from that funding level, then you can. And, and we're able to back down. That's when you actually see a savings in them, in the mill rate. You come back off.
So pretty much the increase would end up being each year with the increase would be, in theory, if we could fund to maintain this year. Next year would be pretty much a road would be the difference of a reconstruction, but that may be. You know, four hundred thousand dollars, but that would be the difference. So that would show like, that's how we would make. We wouldn't just pick an arbitrary number, like, okay, there's a road that, that the increase, this road is responsible for this increase. I would try to do that too. So it, we would have more of a, you wouldn't just be like, alright, well, they gave me this much last year, we'll ask for this much. Like, it, it would be a strategic plan. Maybe not the specific road, but it would be, it would be aimed at rehabilitating our network.
And, and the one thing that obviously none of us can predict is uh, what's gonna happen, you know, the cost of materials and things like that next year, you know, next year. Uh, say, again, people get their act together. Um, we have things, inflation comes down, um, life is good, things are, are better.
The weather's nice.
The weather's nice. Uh, it could be, you know, we could be asking for the same amount, but we're actually getting more.
Correct, it could, it could happen.
Obviously, we don't have a crystal ball, but that's kinda why I asked this question is because it's just kinda, I, I know that if somebody came to me and asked me this question of. Well, what is this impact going to be to me over the long term?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, will I have to chronically pay another mill every single year?
Where does it stop?
Where does it stop? Exactly. So I, I think that's good for all of us to explore and discuss that.
And I know that for me with, if this goes through, with, with the jump it is, even though it's only maintaining, if that was the case next year, I would definitely make sure I brought it. To everybody's attention. I would say, you know, even if there's an ask or whatever, but I would show like, we could do the same thing as last year. And we would gain this much and we would get this much more and then I would have an option of, to maybe go a little bit more aggressive. Like I would try to do that for you guys and the, the taxpayers, to show what you're getting for it.
Can you put a longer, like a, a long-term um, schedule together?
For like specific roads or money wise?
Not just money wise and what you feel, you know, take your plan instead of having it condensed so much, you know, show that plan. Over a longer period of ti, or a realistic period of time.
You can do it and I can, I can try to do something like that. Obviously every, the further you get out, the more variables there will be, so the less accurate. It potentially could be down the road. Um, I can try to work it out and s, lock it in, like if nothing else were changed and no variables come up, I could try to run that. There's escalation, there's different aspects with the road or different treatments could come out in between that we try, but I could try to do something similar and show. If we did this percent, we could try to project it out. I don't, five or six years and see where that goes and. And at that point, if we can, if I can figure out the trend lines to make it work where I feel it's giving us an accurate number, then I would go further. But I would definitely, there, there's a lot to it other than just kinda like.
Yeah.
There's, I, I would have to work on uh, some database stuff to get it to project right, but I can try.
Right, because you gotta project the degradation of the road.
And then you gotta project what you increase and then where that falls and which ones, which, at what point do they get pulled out of the algorithm to get set back up top?
Correct.
So it could be, it, it's possible. I mean, I, I'll look into it. I can see if I can try to get that for, for longer than a three-year plan.
So objectively, what we wanna see to sell this to the taxpayers would be like a return on investment.
Mm-hmm.
So if we don't invest in this, they're just gonna get worse. If we keep maintaining, that percentage ratio is gonna get worse.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could put a forecast together over five years.
Yeah.
Or as much, how far, like, like this is what's gonna happen if we stay where we are. This is what potentially if we don't invest and if we start this plan to invest what we need, this is where we could go.
Yeah, and I can do that. And then as, as a, a building block, this, this slide is an example of that. This shows that we lost. With one point two million dollars. So this is a good starting point and I can try to do that, but.
Oh yeah, so I'll provide everyone a copy of the PowerPoint, so that way you'll have the PowerPoint slides. Um, and we'll put them as a link on our website as well.
You know what you could do to make it, to make it easier for people to understand and if you put it on our town website. To most people, eighty-five PSI means nothing to them. But if you take a picture of the road and say, this is eighty-five PSI, this is thirty, well, you're, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
People can buy into that. And that, that, that way they're getting something and they can see what they're gonna get.
There's actually a lot of stuff, I can do that for our current town, so people will actually have, I, okay, I know what that road's like to drive on. And then there's a lot of information out there and there's a lot of database of pictures of roads throughout that I can tie it to. So. We could do our community as, as like the lead pitcher and then other examples of, of that same one, but might not be necessarily in our town, but we can do that. I mean, I do have some roads if, if people wanted to kinda know what different roads or different rating, rating, ratings. Um, let me find my card. So, alright, an eighty-five would be Mechanic Street, Broad Street. There, there's two right there that are what, that's an eighty-five. And that'd be pretty nice if the whole town was that. Um, a seventy-five is Cardinal Drive and Killingley Drive. Again, that'd be pretty nice to have the whole town to be that. Um, then if we were to drop down, so if I go too fast or I can try to type this up for you guys too, if you wanted these.
Yeah, if you can give like a little, that'd be great.
Um, the next, in the next bracket, which would, and so those, the ones that I just all listed, that's all in prevent. Um, that's where that would be. And then some other ones down, uh, Minor, so the top of the minor rehabilitation would be a Valley Road. A bottom of that is a Dog Hill and a Mash and Tuck. That's around near sixty-five. That's your complaint line, which I don't know, again, it, it's hard. I tried to pick towns that are roads around town that. Maybe everybody kinda has been on, um, just to concede, but to me, again, trying to take. My background out of it, I could drive down Dog Hill or Mash and Tuck and see why the average person would start to notice that they're deteriorating and that's right, pretty much at that line. Um, then some major, some major rehab, rehabilitation roads are um, Putnam Road. State Avenue, not all of State Avenue, but pretty much in the flats across from the fire department. That's, that's a, that's a fifty actually. Um, Putnam Road is a sixty-five, Connecticut Mills is a fifty and Cutler Road is in the fifty, in the fifty range. And then Maple Street, all of Maple Street, the weighted average for Maple Street from the front to the back is a sixty-five. So that's where you guys, I believe, talked last night about the potential of how much that road's gonna cost. And right now luckily we're still in this, we're right at the top of that major rehabilitation. So we have a little bit of time, but as you watch this slide, it doesn't take too long to start to get down to reconstruction and Maple Street. Is a very important road and would be a very expensive road to fix. Um, and then, so some reconstructions are East Franklin, Franklin Street, Furnish Street. Dyer Street and um, the backside of Ledge Road. Again, I tried to kinda give examples that kinda, I'm not sure everybody's uh, daily travel patterns, but. And then um, good roads, so roads in the nineties would be uh, Fieldstone Road, Granite Court, Lower Lum, Commerce Avenue. And then right at the bottom of Routine, where you get between Routine and Preventative would be Green Hollow Road and. So some of these, we're actually gonna be doing the work on this year and some of them we're not. I tried to include those ones so you guys could see where they're at and then when you see us, the work happening this year, you'll kinda know. That we're hopping bands, so.
So North Road, that's, that's fairly, that was done not that long ago.
So there's two parts of that. So the first part of North Road's actually gonna get crack sealed this year, um, because it's due.
I mean, not North Road, North Street.
North Street, North Street's uh, same as Mechanic. Yep, they're, they're in the same, the same number, they're around eighty-five. And that's why it got crack sealed a few years ago. It was right around in that prevent, it was the high side of prevent and the low side of routine.
It was kinda cool watching them go down and.
Yeah, yep.
See all those cracks.
But you did bring up North Road, so that's an example of a road that's a, a long through road that a lot of people know. The front side got done in two thousand and thirteen. Um, and now that's due for a crack seal and part of it that didn't get done, not a, a chip seal a few years ago, but the backside of that road. Needs to be, that's in reconstruction and. It, it's right at the border of major rehabilitation and reconstruction and to do that, I forgot the length, I don't have the length off the top of me, but if anybody knows from. Quin's Hill to Cutler Road is a little over five hundred thousand, just for that one road. So that, if that brings in more of a perspective of. One point eight really isn't that much when you look at how much a road like that were to do and you don't wanna get in the habit of doing. You know, four hundred yards of it and stopping and then coming back, that just creates more of a, a mess. And at, some of the, there, that has been done in Killingley and some of what we're trying to do also on the side of this is where that buffer money that we have to operate. Is starting to connect some of these dots to try to get everything back on a similar rotation throughout the whole road.
I mean, I could definitely have an appreciation uh, for what I do for my work there. I travel all of Killingley and along with Pomfret, Eastern Hampton. And I can tell you, I see the roads throughout all of our towns, really throughout the northeast and. Um, there are definitely some roads like uh, redoing Cape Ron, that was a needed, I dreaded driving down Cape Ron Street. Um, especially for like my patients in the back, I'm driving and you know, poor, poor guy's got a broken leg complaining of pain. Here I am bouncing down the road there, their, their, their leg is now worse. Um, so you know, I could definitely have an appreciation for that because there are definitely a lot of these roads and um, piecemealing them is a terrible idea. You know, that's, that's another uh, thing too, like you said, and I didn't realize that the town of Killingley has done that in the past. And uh, you know, again, not one council is to blame for this. It seems like we just never looked at it as intensively as we have in the past.
And that's, I think, that's on every level. That was council, that was um, the, the town, the in-town employees and, and the residents, I think. It just was one of those that. It, it, oh, alright, they're paving this a little bit today. It'd be nice if they paved my road sometime and that went on for a long time. And I think that's, that's unfortunately why there's such a gap now and that's what hurts is making up the gap. I think if we had, that gap didn't exist. And we were at the funding of a one point three on a healthy road network, I don't think you'd have much complaint because people would see the benefit of a healthy network. And it's just making the change is the hard part and I understand that.
One thing I will say is our, our previous town manager during one of the buzzer processes that I was uh, part of, um, as well as a couple other of us. We were looking, we asked the previous town manager what are possible places for cuts. And one place that was suggested to us by the town manager was from the Batumus Line.
Yeah.
Take away from the roads. So and unfortunately, we saw what happened when you do that.
Yep, and that, that was a problem. I think that was a spot, again, nobody really necessarily, there, there wasn't this, a level of detail or attention brought to this at the time. There have been in other towns at that time, but just there hadn't been in Killingley, which is not really any particular person's fault. It's just a bunch of, of, it's a snowball.
And I think it, for periods of time, for long periods of time, Killingley was really putting out fires with regards to our roads. You know, we were, we were cutting the. Certain areas of a road that needed immediate addressing and immediate attention and. You know, digging it out, getting it done and moving on and um, we're really trying to take a more holistic approach to the roads. That way. When you do do a preventative maintenance, you're able to do the entire road and then you walk away from that road for the period of time to the next. Um, preventative maintenance. Um, and then you also have the same application throughout the entire, that entire road. As opposed to piecemeal here and there, um, and having some degrading at way different rates than others. Um, so. It's, it's, it was driven by what funding they had at the time and sometimes it is easier to cut from a Batuminus line. It doesn't have a face. Um, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't look like an actual program that people participate in, except we all drive on the roads.
And there is one thing too that I wanna kinda throw in there for, to. Kinda more so how we got here. So some of this is, I'm not obviously talking personal experience, it was. Before I would have been able to have personal experience, but there was a lot of time in Killingley where there was a pretty good pavement management plan. There was a lot of chip sealing that went on. There wasn't as many of these other preservation techniques and I, I think it was in the eighties. He's not looking at me. Anyway, um, is when that was going on. Alright, thank, yeah, and there, and there was a good plan and then it kinda got away from that where they started trying to focus more on. And this kinda goes back to right in the beginning with uh, what Ray said, they focus a little bit more on reconstruction, but then they abandon the preservation. And then they just left it. And at the time, the, the gap between Routine and Preventative and Reconstruction was a lot closer. So by the time they realized like, we haven't done preventative in a while, that gap had widened and they, and. They hadn't kept up with, even though they were focusing on reconstruction, they hadn't kept up with even the cost for that. And then next thing you know, you're, you look back and that ship's floating away over there and then that ship's floating away over there and you're just kinda stuck in the middle. And that's pretty much how we got to where we got to not try to oversimplify or, or blame anybody, but that's. There was a time in Killingley where there was a higher preservation um. Aspect and the, and the network was a whole, it hasn't always. It hasn't always been where we're at.
Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, thank you for this presentation. It was uh, definitely enlightening and uh, definitely learned a lot from it. Um, so we will move on in the agenda.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you. Uh, executive session, we have none, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Randalsky, second by Mr. Wood. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, this meeting is adjourned.